December? December fourth. December fourth, okay, alright. We'll let you know, I'll let you know.
Oh, okay. That's this Saturday, is it this Saturday?
Can't do it this Saturday. Can't do it next Saturday. Nope.
I think I'm gonna be with the sheriff, I think. I think I'm gonna be here and I told him I wasn't for sure.
You, you did your job well. Mr. Chairman, I've got six o'clock. Oh, okay. Alright, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to rush you. Okay, alright.
Alright, good evening and welcome to tonight's Anson County Board of County Commissioners meeting. Want to welcome everyone in attendance and also the ones watching on our live screen. Uh, we're gonna begin tonight with our invitation. Someone will call Reverend John Green of Poten Baptist Church.
Let's go before the throne, throne of grace, we will. Heavenly Father, Lord, we do thank you, God, that you have given us a tremendous privilege, Lord, just to, to petition you in prayer, Father, and just to be able to call upon you and just to ask and have a relationship with you through prayer, Father, and, Lord, I'm thankful that the citizens of this county, Lord, and I'm thankful that our elected officials see the importance of having prayer before each meeting, God. Lord, I'm thankful for that, Father, and also, Lord, your word tells us a few things about prayer, God. Lord, your word tells us that in James, chapter four, verse three, Lord, that sometimes we have not because we ask not, we receive not because we don't ask, Father, and then when we do ask, sometimes we ask in amiss for the wrong reasons, the wrong, the wrong ways and the wrong things, Father. Lord, also, when we look in your word, you tell us about your prayer, you say in Ja- uh, Luke, chapter seven, Lord, that if we ask in your name, we'll receive anything that we ask, Father. Lord, with the caveat, Lord, that it be glorified in your name. Lord, my prayer tonight is just simply this, Father, that every thought that's thought tonight, every word that's uttered and every, every decision that's made is made to glorify you, Father, that you're lifted up on high and exalted, Lord. God, we thank you again for this day, we thank you for your son, Jesus, in your name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Uh, now we're gonna do our pledge of allegiance and we'll have Mr. Little Reed to read that.
Everyone please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God in equal and liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Little Reed. Alright, moving on, I'm gonna read our ethics statement. In accordance with the State Government Ethics Act, it is the duty of every board member to avoid both conflicts of interest and appearances of conflict. Does any board member have any known conflict of interest or appearance of conflict with respect to any matter coming before the board tonight? If so, please identify the conflict and refrain from any undue participation in the particular matter involved. Is there any conflict at this time? Okay, done, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Subobbed.
Have a motion by Commissioner Gatewood, second by Commissioner Little Reed. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Alright, moving on to our consent agenda, you have one item there? Entertain a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Mims, second by Commissioner Gatewood. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Alright, moving on to our appearances. First up, we have Ms. Denise Cannon, our grant writer.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I am here to give you an update on the grants department. And I do have a handout, if you look on page one, this should show that the grants that, um, I have written and we wait, that have been submitted, and so we're waiting on the award notice.
Okay.
I can get you all to turn to page two. The first grant on page two, um, taking a bit off of Mr. Taking a bit off of Mr. Leary, I know you had talked about, um, working with departments and things like that, so I have worked with, um, Mr. Nance, um, to try to get some C- CPR ki- uh, kits. And most grants run sixty days, ninety days, even a hundred and twenty days. This particular grant right here, it takes the first six hundred, um, funding. And so, I'm pleased to announce that Anson County did get in that one of six hundred. So hopefully we'll hear some news from that, um, soon. If you go down a little bit, um, you can see I'm working with, um, the Health Department as well, we're kinda exploring some grant funding with that. And middle ways the page. I know last time we talked about the old hospital site. And I know the board wasn't sure of what they wanted, wanted to do with that site. But I did find a grant, I'm gonna write that grant, to maybe give the hu- hospital site a little bit more curb appeal until you figure out what it is you want to do with it. We'll go over to third page. As far as the management, management of the grants. Of course, we have the CDBG grant, Cart Summit, and the NCRR. I believe it was, and I'm not mistaken, Mr. Last Friday, had an impromptu meeting with Mr. Collins here. We kinda talked about the project very briefly. So in the upcoming weeks, me and him will get together and talk a little bit more about it, and some more projects coming. With that being said, I would like to bring up Ms. Dennis, and she could talk with you all about a little bit more about the CDBG project.
Thank you, Ms. Cannon, and good evening, commissioners.
Good evening.
Good to see you this evening. Good evening, County Manager of Salisbury, good to see you too, and some friendly faces in the audience, hi. I'm Christina Dannis, I'm the Director of Community Economic Development for the Centralina Regional Council of Governments. Uh, we serve nine counties, Anson County being one of them in the Charlotte metro area. And so tonight, I wanna give you an update. Turn this a little, is that okay? Uh, tonight, I'm gonna give you an update on where we are on the community development block grant for neighborhood revitalization. That was awarded to Anson County. That award is an annual award that is opened up from NC Commerce. These are HUD, Housing and Urban Development Funds, that pass through the state through NC Commerce and are eligible to communities through a competitive grant. We've been working on the grant for a couple of years now, and this is a very complicated grant, and I appreciate all of Anson County's residents and staff, um, and you all for, uh, going along this process. We were successful most recently in receiving construction contractor bids for five homes in Anson County. It took us two bids to get those, and accordance with the procurement, we are to receive three bids per home or per project in order to have an eligible bid for procurement of selection of a contractor. We were able to do that. The contractors are in the, uh, finalization process of getting their insurance and confirming documentation and following those procurement, uh, opportunities. I'll give you an update on those, I'll also share this for the record. We examined the low bidder for it and the qualified bidder for it, and that's examined, um, for each of the bids. At one eighty-one Olive Branch, we selected man construction. At twenty-seven Brief Road, man construction was also selected. At thirty-four ninety-eight Cappadocia Church Road, Temperature Connections was selected. At sixty-one Stardust Road, DAP Contractors was selected. At eighty-six Frontier Road, Cook Contractors was selected. These contractors total approximately, including the contingency that's allowed, eight hundred and forty-two thousand, nine hundred and sixty-one dollars and seventy-four cents. This is out of a grant that was a total of nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars that was received by Anson County for this, um, homeowner of program. I do want to alert you that under the program, when you trigger a certain threshold of cost per square foot, under NC Commerce rules, you are considered a substantial rehabilitation, okay? That cost is seventy-two dollars per square foot currently. When you trigger seventy-two dollars per square foot, based on the cost of the approved contractor and the write-up, it must go to NC Commerce for approval. All of the five properties triggered the seventy-two dollar square foot cost and will require NC Commerce approval for the work. I will tell you that we are working on seven projects for CDBGNR across the region. Uh, most of them are in Anson and Stanley County, but we also have done them in Lincoln and others. We are triggering more substantial rehab cost as the cost of labor and materials continues to go up and the construction bids continue to go up. So this is something that we're seeing more and more. We'll be preparing them to go to, um, NC Commerce for approval and review, and once that's approved, we'll move forward with the program with the homeowners and the contractors. Do you have, all have any questions for me about that, or anything I could explain better?
Just to make sure I'm clear, in the Burnsville area, you will be renovating five homes, is that correct?
Those that were eligible under the program, correct, five homes.
A total of five, and around eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars for those five homes.
Correct, correct.
Alright, thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Now, if citizens have questions about anything, who should they contact?
I would suggest that they contact Ms. Cannon, the grants manager, and she will get them in contact with us, or she will, we'll help her answer those questions.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Ms. Dennis? Alright, well, I appreciate your, uh, participation here in Anson County and helping to revitalize the homes there.
Thanks, Chairman, good to see you. And, um, it's been a long time coming, but we're gonna move forward quickly from here. Hopefully, we're on the, this, the path to, path to completion. We'll be updated, thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you, Ms. Cannon, for your update on the, the other pending grants. Yeah, I know, that's what, uh... I'll find out in a minute. Alright, up next, we have, uh, Mike Sessions with the Water and Sewer Report. Mike, I just wanna make, I just wanna make sure you speak into the mic, to...
Okay, okay, thanks. This is our report, but, uh, since the last time I was here, uh, I'll just go down our different projects and let you know what we were doing. Um, on our lead service line inventory, uh, Davis, Martin, and Powell, uh, has finished their survey, and right now, we have thirty unknowns of what, of what we know of the lead service lines that we've got to go out and test. And we will test them in November. And, uh, uh, and Hazen's, uh, continuing, uh, helping us with this because of, you know, getting the materials we had to mail to people and whatever, but we are ahead of schedule on this. Uh, uh, Lynn and Chris and I, we, we usually have a conference call with them every month or two. But this is a program that runs through twenty, thirty-five, so it's a long, long process. The filter rehab, uh, Hazen's completed design of the filter rehab. Uh, uh, they also were proposing, preparing a proposal to study to get to increase our capacity on the super pulsator side. And that'll take a little while, but, but they are preparing that. Uh, Dellinger's, uh, procuring the materials and equipment. There's a long lead time on the equipment, but we were in a meeting with them last week, and they assured us that, that it's still gonna be, the project will be completed by September. That we're, uh, Hazen's really pushing them because of, uh, the, the time on the, on the money, uh, and, and...
So that's September of twenty-six?
Yeah.
Okay.
And as far as taking time to get the materials, that's no surprise.
Sure.
Another thing that we've done, uh, and I think Lynn knows about this, when we were having some complaints this summer, I got Hazen to look into some different things, we, different treatment, uh, things that we might need to do or change, and, uh, uh, they're still doing that, they were, uh, just maybe some different strategies for our disinfection, but that's, we're just kinda in the beginning of that. We hadn't had any problems in a while, it was just, uh, I don't wanna have them again. The sewer projects, uh, the sewer model's been completed, uh, they're gonna do additional flow monitoring this spring 'cause they want to get our flows through the rainy season so we can get a true, true monitor on it. They've completed the pump station evaluations, of course, uh, Lynn's well aware of this, it's Brown Creek, that's our, that's our worst, and, uh, I talked to Brandon about this last week. They, they are, that's still in the planning stages, but we won't, won't to build that pump station. So, not just to meet what we got now, so it's, so it, down the road, if the size of the lines are increased and our, uh, volume picks up, we don't wanna turn around and have to, not what pump stations cost, and I, I think that's the right thing to do, and uh, I think Lynn thinks that too, uh, but, and I'm, I'm glad they're looking at it that way.
Yeah, I would hope it would be designed for the future and not just what we need today.
Right, right. But that's also why it's so costly.
Sure.
But it'll be more costly if we don't do it that way.
That's right.
They're also, and Lynn handles this stuff, but they, they continue to work on our funding support, and they submitted a loan application. What, Lynn, in the last two, three weeks? Okay. And I, I'm not up on that, Lynn, how long could it be before we hear anything about it? And the last thing I wanted to touch on, and this is just, uh, taking place, but the PFOS that everybody hears about, they're doing a study, uh, on that, they're just getting into that. Uh, you know, that's the man-made chemicals, it's, it's a big to-do about now, because the, the reason it is, is 'cause they really don't know the facts of it.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, they're, they're hoping to apply for a study grant on that. And I don't think they've awarded those yet, have they, from what? Yeah, but... Yeah, well, with, with SCS, uh, uh, just the environmental engineer, they've always done our environmental work. They're looking at, they're, they're, that's a different kind, but they're looking at that to see what we might have to do to that. That is nationwide, everybody's got to do that. I would even assume, I don't know this, but I would even assume Waverford used to have a, a little landfill off Salisbury Street. I'm sure somebody's gonna have to look at that. And, but from all the information I got, it's every landfill, and I don't see how, uh, from what the different things are that's in P- what they say PFOS could be in, um, anything from carpet to cosmetics to, uh, just about everything, uh, fire retardant materials, I don't see how they're gonna find any landfill that's something that's not gonna have to be done.
Right.
That's, that's where we're at right now.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I just received an email from a citizen saying they can't hear the audio portion of our meeting. So maybe we should test it, see if there's something wrong.
Did you know of an issue about there?
About now.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay.
Just lean in and talk into the mic, to...
Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Mr. Sessions, I, I got a couple of questions, is there any other questions for Mr. Sessions? Alright, I, I just wanna go back and review a, an incident over, I think it was two weekends ago now. Um, I received some calls from some citizens about it, and I just wanna walk through the process here, so, so I know, and then the citizens watching and listening can know. Um, in Peachland, there was a water outage, and I think it was two weekends ago, I think the outage occurred somewhere around four-thirty in the morning.
Okay.
Um, I was notified of it about twenty hours into the event, and then I think water was restored about thirty hours later. Were you aware of that outage?
I was over there.
What, what time would, what time did you make it on scene?
I went Sunday, uh, and Chris, if you can come up here, I went Sunday and, uh, uh, they thought they had it figured out, but what happened, a valve on the side of seventy-four...
Was bypassing water?
Uh, polished it.
Yes, sir.
In the meantime, while they were looking, they looked all day for leaks. In the meantime, while they were looking, they were testing valves and trying to close them off, another valve.
Broke, uh, well aware.
And that's where the problem came in.
Okay.
And they stayed there the whole time till it was...
Yes, sir, I was with them. I, I was there, and I was told that neither the director nor the assistant director was there. I think you showed up later, after the fact, after some citizens called complaining about the water being out for twenty-four hours at that time.
Yeah, but I, I stay on the phone with them, Mr. Cottle, and Chris does too, and we were aware of everything going on.
So, my question is, how long do we leave the crews on scene until we get some more support in? Because if they had rode up and down the road for twenty hours and ain't found a leak, I don't think they're mysteriously gonna find one at the twenty-first hour.
Well...
They didn't find one at the twenty-first hour, sir. How I went, Chairman, was, they called me in the middle of the morning, I told them to get some water back to the customers, which they did. They got some water back to them, it wasn't off total twenty-four hours. It wasn't off straight twenty-four hours. So what I told them to do was first, they had to take out the pressure-reducing valve, which they did, they got water back to a certain area. They had probably three people with lower pressure than normal, not all the way off.
Okay, I'm gonna stop you right there for a minute.
Okay.
Because I was there when they were discussing changing that bypass valve at...
They took it out.
At seven o'clock into, six-thirty in the evening on Sunday.
Yes, sir.
Twenty hours into this event, I was sitting on the side of the road when you two were having a conversation with the gentleman telling him to take the valve out.
I told him to take it out, I did.
Twenty hours into the event.
But everybody wasn't out of water twenty hours into the event, though. It was certain sections that still had water.
The citizens that were calling me were still out of water twenty hours into the event.
Not the whole, like I just said, not the whole area was not out of water the twenty-four hours. It was not.
My whole point is...
I understand what you're saying, but it was not.
I want you guys, when your crew's out there working...
Yes, sir.
And I think we can respect the, the field guys for doing their job the best they can.
Yes, sir.
I want you guys to assist them when they're twenty hours into an event. I think they need some help on the ground from one of you two guys. If, if there's, if there's assets or resources that you can provide, if you could go out and help them locate valves, if you can go out and help them locate leaks, that's what I want you guys to do as the directors of the department. Um, it's not fair to leave them guys out there day and night, working on their own, and I know you may be working on the phone at home, but you can work from the phone on the scene too, and help them guys with other issues that they're having.
Yes, sir.
So, I, I just want, I want you guys to take some ownership in your department.
I, I do.
I do.
A very lot of ownership, so, I, I don't agree with that statement, but okay.
Around six-thirty, I don't know how I missed you.
Yeah, I, I think you got there after I got there, but I...
And, and, but, uh, I take ownership of the department.
Okay.
And I was over here Sunday when they had a leak.
I appreciate it, that's what I, I want you guys to be involved, I don't think it's fair just to throw them out there.
Some people get aggravated, and they call, 'cause some, one of them called me and said he hadn't seen us. But, uh, that's neither here nor there as far as coming from a citizen. Uh, but we got ownership, I promise you.
Okay, that's, I, I just want you to take ownership in that, take some pride into it.
And I want you to know we got it.
Alright, I appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions for Mr. Sessions, or Mr. Parent? Alright, thank you for that. Alright, moving on to our, uh, next item, we're gonna move to our public addresses to the board. There shall be a time set aside at each regular meeting of the board for public comment. Each citizen who wishes to speak during this time must sign up on a sign-up sheet prior to the start of the meeting. Each citizen shall be allowed three minutes for their presentation. All citizens are expected to follow proper decorum and shall not use profanity nor defamatory speech. The public is expected to remain seated except when leaving the room. Only presenters listed on the agenda or recognized by the chairman will be called to the podium to address the board. Commissioners are expected not to comment on matters brought to the board during this time, but to delay action or comment until staff has had an opportunity to research the subject matter and report necessary and relevant information to all members of the board. At this time, I'm gonna call Mr. William Short. Mr. Short, just make sure you speak into the microphone, please.
Here's, uh, a few handouts right there.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
That's just a copy of the email where I requested, uh, definition of commissioner concern on the agenda. And, uh, uh, your chair was very prompt in getting that information back to me, the chairman was, so... So if I'm not mistaken, that's kinda the definition of what y'all go by off the commissioner's, uh, you know, part of the agenda. So I'll go ahead and begin. So, good evening, commissioners, uh, my name is William Short. Better known to this board as one of those people that I was called the last meeting I was here. Last time I stood here, I called out what I believe was the commissioners using their elected title to act as a character witness for a man sitting in federal court for trafficking large amounts of drugs. Let's be real, that's not poor judgment, that is an embarrassment to this board and to the people of Anson County. Only one of you, the chairman, had the decency and the backbone to say, "I wouldn't do that." The rest of you sat quietly. You had your chance, and you s- you let it slide. And that silence, it tells the people that when it comes time to stand up for the right, for what's right, too many on this board would rather sit still and hope no one notices. We, the people, notice, I notice, the community notice, and we're not staying quiet about it. So tonight, I'm giving you another chance, another opportunity to look at the people in the eye and just watching, and show them where you stand. Will it be silence again, or will someone finally have the courage to speak up and denounce it? And if anyone wants to hide behind procedure, let me remind you, there is a place on the agenda called a commissioner concern. Looks like to me, the definition of that would be the proper place to, anyone could do that. That's where you can speak up if you have got the guts to. I'm not here to play politics, I'm not here to hold, I'm here to hold the people accountable. Because leadership isn't about titles. It's about character. And the silence in the face of wrongdoing is just as guilty as the act itself. And I like, thank y'all for letting me come, and, uh, I think that this is something that needs to be addressed, in my opinion. If, if nothing but, you know, say, "Hey, I don't agree with it." That's what, over, almost two thousand people watched that video last meeting. So this board allowed two thousand people... So this board allowed two thousand people to see them sit in silence, other than the chairman, on that situation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Short. All right, next up, we have Mr. Daniel Wowe. I, I hope I pronounced that right.
You got it right, man.
All right.
You got it right.
I appreciate y'all letting me speak tonight. Uh, I wanna do a pros and cons. I hadn't been before this bowling years. Mr. Gatewood, you remember me?
Sure.
Mr. Woodburn's not here. I worked with this board on two different occasions, put laws in our North Carolina Hunting Digest. Two with this board. We drafted the first in two thousand and two. Ninety-nine other counties in this state adopted that law. We came back in and we wrote another law. Those two laws exist in our, in our North Carolina Hunting Digest now, today. All hunter counties have adopted them. These are pros, all right? I received a civic recognition award in two thousand and fifteen from Governor McCrory, I mean, yeah, for Governor McCrory. This board signed off on that award that I've got. I was one of two people to ever receive that award in this county, okay? Now we're going to, we're going from pros to the cons. We're going to the cons. This is not the same board that I used to deal with. I called in, I, I reached out to my commissioner, and I asked questions about tax issues. Comes to find out, I've been paying tax on a piece of land I sold eight years ago. Went through Mr. Newton's office, I emailed each and every one of you, including you, Mr. Town, County Manager. No response. Crickets. Crickets. Never, my name's never been in the paper, my name's never been delinquent in taxes. I pay my bills. I got an eight-twenty-two FICA score. I pay my bills. Here we go. Tax issue, no response. Crickets. DWI issue from a, from a, more than one from a county commissioner. Crickets. Numerous driving infractions from a county commissioner. Crickets. This, these are going out, these emails are going out. I've got copies of these emails, and I will send them to each and every one of you. If you want them, I'll be more than happy to give them to you. Standing in for a drug trafficker, the largest county's ever seen, okay? My book, my God doesn't do that. I'm sorry. We just don't do that. It's not professional. Uh, we, we set y'all to a set, a set of higher standards than us. We all make mistakes. But you know what y'all don't do that we do? Y'all don't apologize. You ask for forgiveness. The Bible tells us that you have no business at that altar. You leave your gifts at that altar, and you go, and you make amends. You make friends, mend with your brothers and sisters that as follows you. That's got to do with prayer, that's got to do with your ties, your offerings. Read your Bible. Tells you exactly what you need. Don't laugh, sir, 'cause that's directed right towards you, sir. Now, I need to ask y'all, what are we doing here? This is not the same board. This is not the same board I used to deal with to get laws changed. We're, we're, y'all look dirty in that public's eye. Social media is drowning y'all. Stand up for yourself. Forget, make some kind of statement to the public. Ask for forgiveness, even if you don't think you deserve it or they deserve it, do it anyway, 'cause that's what the Lord, you know what he says? He's not gonna forgive us if we don't forgive each other. We've got to start forgiving each other. One last thing before I go. If I send an email, I do not want to get shoved off on the county attorney, because every person sitting in this room right here has to pay that bill. Okay? Every time I ask a commissioner for an answer, and she can't answer it, or he can't answer it, it goes straight to the attorney. I love Scott Forbes, I've known him my whole life. But business is business. He gets paid to answer a question that we elect to put in their seats. Thank y'all. Have a blessed day, and I appreciate your time.
I bless you.
Thank you for that, Mr. Wowe. All right, um, again, I'm gonna publicly denounce that I do not support any drug use activity, laundering, trafficking, anything in this county. That, uh, that, we don't have a place in this county to stand up for our children if that's, we're gonna allow that kind of activity in this county. The children of our future deserve better, and, and I hope that I can provide better, and I hope that all of us can provide better for, as commissioners, for the future of our children in this county, so.
I agree.
Mr. Mr. Short, you are correct. Commissioner concerns, the email is, uh, accurate. What we're, I don't even see where you're at. It, it was responded that that is the opportune time for commissioners to bring up any concerns they may have. Uh, answering citizen concerns, um, citizens call commissioners, email commissioners, as Mr. Wowe just mentioned. That's the time for those, uh, commissioners to address those concerns at that time, if they feel the need to, if they've not been answered, uh, back through email. So thank you for that, reaching out.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
If I may, I have advised many of you, I, I'm addressing this to the, I've advised many of you to let me address some citizens' concerns. Um, so if I take, I take that as a fault of mine, if that is something from the, in the future, if you want to address it with me, I'd be glad to still do it. If you want to address them with the other people, that's fine. I still, I, I have advised you in the past that I am the one that has asked you to, to let me address a lot of concerns on this, so, so that stands with me, and I just didn't want to sit there and not say anything when I have done that, okay?
All right, thank you for that. Okay.
Don't get interrupted, don't fall. Six times. Are we gonna have a meeting, or are we just gonna let them talk?
Yes, sir. I'm gonna speak with you after, 'cause I've not seen an email from you, but I will verify.
We, we.
Okay. All right, moving on to our, uh, next item, manager report. I'm here from Lynn.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, under the first item, it's something that, uh, I mentioned briefly with Mr. Sessions, was making his presentation. The State Water Infrastructure Authority, uh, has a process whereby counties like Anson that are tier-one counties primarily because of their economic situation, uh, with low wages and, uh, lack of growth, lack of economic development. Uh, we discussed it a month or so ago, and you advised me to go ahead and proceed, and I sent on a preliminary resolution, if you'll remember, you adopted. And we've been advised that we can, before the end of this month, send a, actually, a, the, the real application, which is another resolution, which is on your agenda. It's very similar, if you'll, if you look at it. It's not the Department of, uh, of Water Infrastructure, which is what we've been working with. This is a separate agency, the State Water Infrastructure Authority. And, uh, and, and so if you approve that tonight, we will, as Mr. Sessions mentioned, we will put that in play. It will submit it, uh, to the state. Uh, it's asking, asking them to go ahead, 'cause we know, because our finances, we're not gonna make any big, major changes between now and next year. When, well, actually, in the next month or two, whenever our la, next audit goes in, uh, that's gonna pretty much reflect the same economical situation that we've had before, and that's one of the criteria. So I would, I would suggest that you adopt the resolution, it'll go into the State Water Infrastructure Authority, and, uh, they'll go ahead and say, "Okay, we're distressed," which opens the door for us to, uh, to get, uh, grant money, as well as to maybe secure a loan to go ahead and continue our, our development and our upgrades to our water and sewer systems.
Okay, and this is a voluntary, uh, I guess, uh, resolution that we are submitting to them, that we're telling them that we're distressed, but that's based off of their grading factors, their scores that they have already given us, correct?
Absolutely. It's using their criteria.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
And it requires us to adopt this really?
Right, you have to adopt it, and you don't have to, like, like, like the chairman just said, it's voluntary.
Yeah, but based upon what your recommendation?
I'm sure when they do their next, uh, grading, which would be sometime in the spring, then, uh, they'll probably advise us that we are. This just gives us a, probably a six-month or so jump, uh, in order to go ahead and put our names into pot to get hopefully grants to, uh, to do the work that we know needs to be done.
So is that something we can handle tonight?
You can do that tonight, it's on your shoulders.
Yes, we have to have a, a motion to adopt the resolution.
I'd like to make that motion, to adopt the resolution.
Okay, do we have a motion by Commissioner Ellerby to adopt the, uh, resolution, um, for, I'm gonna say, the distressed, uh, utility resolution? We have a second by Commissioner Memes. Any other discussion on that? If you're none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, motion passes. All right, next.
Well, thank you very much. Uh, we'll get that off to the, to the SWIA. Uh, second item is, um, as you know, we do a recognition, uh, and the peers of the county employees submit the names, and the four names for employees of the quarter this time were Robin Bowers of our Parks Direct Department, Amy Dawkins, who was the manager operator, if you will, for the water filtration plant, uh, Sandy Stogner in our inspections Department, and last but not least is Rodney Dix, our emergency management director. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer those, but, uh, we'll be notifying each one of them, and obviously, they'll, they'll receive our certificate, notifying them that they were an employee of the quarter.
All right, well, I want to say, uh, thank you and appreciate all the hard work that those four individuals do for the county. And I think that comes along with a, a check from your pocket, is that right? So.
I would say something else, but yes.
All right, um, anything else, uh?
Uh, the next item, and I, I know there's been some discussion and continuation. I think you just sent out a, a revised animal services contract to the board and to me today. And so that's on the agenda for your discussion, if you desire.
Okay, so yes, each commissioner should have a copy of the latest, uh, revised animal services contract. I don't know if we're prepared to vote on it, or if there's more discussion that's needed.
I just have one question for clarification, and that is, have the terms of the contract been acceptable to Friends of the Anson County Animal Shelter?
Yes, sir, that would be me.
If you'll come to the podium, if there's any other questions.
Friends did go over the contract, and we have all agreed. We gave the contract back, and the different corrections were made by Mr. Forbes. And so as of now, this is our committee, we have agreed. There was just a very few items that we have to ask you tonight to clarify for me. So if you're ready, clarify?
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
The first item is, last night, we received four dogs, and the dogs came from a Marshville address, and I've got the driver's license of the young lady. And this board asked me directly, "Do not intake any animals that are not of Anson County." But I found out that this woman's address is actually, her driver's license says Win, it says Marshville, but she pays taxes in Anson. So my question to the board is, how do I know which way to go if the person says, "I pay taxes and I'm, um, Anson, but my driver's license says Marshville?" So how do I handle that?
Where was?
I, I recommend go by the location of the animal at the time. That's, I mean, someone with a license, a license that says, uh, Marshall, but they live in the, animals are in Anson County, I believe that will qualify as an Anson County animal.
Well, see, her driver's license did say Marshville, but Mr. Cottle explained she was on the border. She was on the border of Anson and of, um, Union. So at the time, when you bring in the four dogs, which now they're bite dogs, we have to take care of them. We have to keep them for ten days in Anson County. So it's just really confusing, because I made a promise, we will not intake unless it's other shelters or foster or something, you know, to do. But then this was brought to my attention, and so it's really confusing to me which way that you want me to go with it.
I have a two-part question.
Yes, sir.
Was the sheriff's office called out for this?
I'm sorry?
Was the sheriff's office called out about this call?
Union County.
Union County was.
Yes, so Union County went. Problem is, they pepper sprayed the dogs, and they darted one of them. Then they brought them back to Anson County. When they brought them back to Anson, then the staff at Anson County got pepper spray on their hands, in their eyes, because our animal control person forgot to tell them until the end that they were pepper sprayed. So when you're handling an animal, trying to give it a vaccine, pepper spray can be really, really bad on your lungs. Trust me, I know.
Well, in doubt?
I'm sorry?
In doubt?
In doubt what, sir?
Of an address? You can call Communications, and they can tell you if that residence is inside Anson County or not.
Well, yes, sir, I figured that, but if you've got four dogs that you're trying to take care of, it's kind of hard to put that to the side if you don't know if they're going to bite or not bite and find out the resident. Once you intake, Mr. Memes, they're intake. You can't get rid of them. They're our dogs now.
I, I understand that part, but I'm saying, within doubt of the address, only thing you gotta do is call Communications. They can tell you where the address is inside Anson County or not, even though her license said Marshville.
Right, so just call you guys?
Call Communications.
Okay.
Six-nine-four-seventy-eight-three.
Six-nine-four-seventy-eight-three.
And they can tell you.
I got it.
Yeah, and that's gonna be a very small percentage of the population of Anson County who live on a county line.
But if it ever happens again, I just did not want the board to come to me and say, "What happened? Why did you take it?" when I could come back and say, "At the time, it was too confusing." You know, I don't want a double play here. I just want everything upfront.
We appreciate, we appreciate you doing your due diligence and, and trying to verify that they are Anson County animals. It just so happened in this instance, they were, but I, I think that's the proper procedure to contact our nine-one-one communications and verify the address.
Well, see, that was confusing only because Union County was called, and then you explained to me it's the ping.
That's right.
Wherever you call from, that's the county it's gonna go to.
That's right.
Correct?
Yes.
Okay, the other thing is, yes, we are ready to sign the contract. We do have animal control that is ready, and we explained to Mr. Memes, animal control is going to be twenty-four-seven. We will have two that will be on call. If one is on vacation, then our director will have a fill-in. So you don't have to worry what happened the other night will ever happen again, Mr. Memes. The other thing is the timing. We have to have the morning time at the shelter to clean. We have fifty-two kennels. If you've got fifty-two dogs, you cannot allow the public to come in in the morning time when you've got feces up to your elbows. And if you've got sixteen puppies, trust me, you've got feces everywhere. So you have to be careful of parvo, you have to be careful of kennel cough, because if a person comes in and we're not clean, and they track through the kennels, that's gonna track it back home to their animals. So that's why we have certain days that we intake, just to protect the public. That was a question, I wanted to answer it.
Okay.
Any other questions?
So, in the contract, it calls for a minimum of twenty hours of intake.
Right.
Come on in here.
Well, see, our animal control will be out there.
State of North Carolina, like when Mr. Gatewood first opened the shelter, state of North Carolina.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, I.
State of North Carolina Department of Agriculture only requires animal shelters to be open a minimum of twelve hours a week. So like when they first opened the shelter back when Becky Thomas and Mark were there, they were only open to the public on Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday afternoons. So, well, and we, and we're open in the morning, but we clean, so we answer the phone and assist people with scheduling surgeries and different things like that, but we have to have time to clean and vaccinate and do heartworm tests and FIV tests and, you know, make sure dogs are getting re-vaccinated. I mean, it, it's a lot more complex than what, what people think.
But animal control can still bring an animal in.
Correct. We're just not intaking to the public.
They're not closed, okay, so we are there, and we are open.
So if somebody wanted to surrender an animal in the morning, they would have to call animal control to go get that animal?
Wait, so no, they would bring their dog into us. They would, they would come in and bring their dog into us. Animal control only picks up stray animals, yeah.
That has to be at twelve, because for them just to surrender an animal, you've got to get cleaned first before you can have a complete grip.
Would it be possible for them to schedule an intake in the morning?
They do. Stan, so Stanley County, and, and we can maybe figure that out today, that they could schedule an intake. Stanley County and lots of animal shelters have gone to managed intake. Now, because they call you on a Monday and said, "I need to turn my dog in because I'm tired of it," or A, B, C, D, whatever reason, that doesn't mean Tuesday morning, we're gonna open the door and say, "Sure, come on tomorrow morning at two, at eight o'clock, and we'll take your dog." Stanley County, I think, sometimes has a two-month waiting period for scheduled appointments. Now, I don't want to put out animals two months, because then people start dropping animals off on the side of the road. But I mean, that's why we open a day, and if, you know, fifty people show up with dogs on Wednesdays between one and three, we take all fifty of those dogs.
And you have to remember, on Thursday, we take animals, or Marine takes animals to Concord to spay and neuter. So that's a service that we provide. And then on Friday, sometimes we do the free clinics, which is rabies and chips and different things. So we try to schedule where you've got community service on Friday. On Thursday, it's community service, because we're taking the animals for you. You bring them to us, we take them, we bring them back, and you come pick them up.
Yeah, and.
Can I actually, uh, um, I may not have been as involved with this situation, maybe it's more. What is the real issue? What, what is the, I guess, the explanation of, I mean, your hours of operation, what, what is the issue behind all that?
We don't, we don't, we don't have, I don't know, we don't have.
I'm, I'm just trying to, I mean, not to cut you off, I'm just.
Ms. Memes, I think, had a question, why would we not open in the morning? And we were trying to explain, because that is our cleaning time. So you've got forty animals, you've got to get them cleaned before you. So you've got forty animals, you've gotta get them cleaned before you come to the shelter.
And then we, yeah, and then we also have to go, I mean, the shelter has to be, be cleaned twice daily.
Understood, so I'm just asking for the sake of, this agreement is in front of us, and not to just, you know, really just go in circles with.
I agree.
Some of your operations. I mean, at the end of the day, the county will not be providing these services if we agree. I know that there's some, there are some parameters in here that, I mean, we're asking. But I, 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 I mean, if we're gonna come to this agreement, we have to trust your services and how you provide them.
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Yes, sir.
First of all, I want to thank Ms. Morton and Ms. Lett. Ms. Lett is an employee of Anson County Government. Ms. Morton and the rest of the volunteers, they're volunteers. They're doing this out of the goodness of their hearts, and I have been very, very impressed with Ms. Morton. If I ever have a project I wanna sell to someone, I'm gonna ask her to come on board and help me out. You know, we've gone back and forth, we've looked at this contract over three months now, and it's an honor for me to say, I make a motion that we accept the contract, forty-four thousand dollars a month, beginning in November, and all the other parameters in the final agreement, plus their additional inputs tonight. That's my motion.
And I second it.
Okay. Have a motion by Commissioner Gatewood to accept the Animal Services, Animal Shelter Services Agreement that's provided. We have a second by Commissioner Ellerby. Before we get any, do you have any other items to discuss with us in this contract?
We do just have one thing, which is fixing all the, the problems that we showed you the other night. That's what Chad wants to ask you.
Okay.
I was gonna ask about the most recent state inspection, the deficiencies that were noted in that, to make sure if there's gonna be a designated time period for that.
Make sure you speak into the mic, and you can pull it up there when you get a lean over.
The noted deficiencies in the most recent state inspection, because at that time, and currently, it's under county control to make sure the county is going to resolve all, you know, resolve the deficiencies, I guess, for lack of a better term. And second thing I would ask is, contract stays November first, which is ten days from now. We've, we've been trying to do this since the beginning of September, so we would ask for, there's, like a ten-day grace period, if that makes sense to, like a transition. It, it might be both for that ten days or whatever, until we can get things going, just because we haven't hired staff. We have people that are ready to be hired for staff, but we don't have a contract in place to hire people to work tomorrow.
Yes.
You know, people work a normal job, you would ask anybody else to give a two-week notice if you were quitting.
Yep.
We, we would ask for the same thing.
I would think this board would be acceptable to a, we know there's gonna be a grace period, a transition period there.
I just wanna make it, you know.
Formal, sure, sure.
Yes, sir. I don't wanna assume too much.
That's right. Does the board have a problem with that grace period, so to speak? You know, with transition?
Hey, the final details, we had, as you, Mr. Cottle, and I guess I could go see Mr. Sosselman, was about the cameras. I'm pretty loud.
Yeah.
I'm just hoarse, as from cleaning kennels. The cameras, we did not make a decision on that. Mr. Sosselman, I ask you, could we keep the cameras and just pay the county for them, or rent them from you? So there's not a period of taking them down and re-putting them back up?
If this board agrees to it, yes.
Okay, I'm asking the board if we could do that.
Yeah, that's cool.
If the board agrees to it, and the cameras that are already fixed to the building.
Yes, sir, they're already up there and fixed and wired.
Now, did Friends, didn't Friends, I guess, purchase or donate those cameras?
We had our own cameras, and then when we were gonna leave, they were taken down, and county cameras were put up. So we're just saying, instead of having to do this over, you know, could we just keep the cameras, 'cause they're already in the building, and just, we'll pay for the services, and it will stream to us. We'll just take over the service fee.
I think that's appropriate, I think that's something Friends and the Anson County IT staff can work out on how to transition that over to the Friends instead of coming to our servers.
And then we will bring back the things that were brought to my attention, were the gates that we took down. That is the county gates, you're welcome to come and get them. The truck, that's all broken down, you're welcome to come and get them. Okay, please come and get that truck.
Yes, we, we will get our belongings.
And, and the things, the only thing that was left up on the open air, and I'm gonna bring it out tonight, is four years ago, we had black mold. And black mold was because we did not have efficient humidifiers. The county said, we will give you humidifiers. It took four years, but Parks and Recs got them up, and I do appreciate them, because if you're working with twenty kennels of poop and, and urine, that's a lot of ammonia. So we've got the humidifiers, but we have no insulation, they took out the insulation, they forgot to put it back. So in the two, in, in the intake and the outtake, we have no insulation in our ceiling. And I know the state did not, they wrote it up four years ago, but now it's four years later. So I'm asking, will the county please put our insulation? It's cheap, it's just a panel that you put on top of these. Would you consider it?
Do you have the quote?
No, sir, because I had to come in and ask you first.
You said it was cheap, you said it was cheap, so I assumed you already had a price.
You're a Park and Recs guy, you know, like the keys to the van. I can't give you a direct answer, because I don't know, I mean. He didn't give us a quote, he gave us an estimate maybe.
Well, that's what I mean, an estimate, so, what is the estimate?
He, no, he did not give us a number. He said he could figure it out, but I do have the person to get the estimate. I had to ask first, you know?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
If I may, Wendell took those out, because as Ms. Morton just said, that they were molding.
Yes, sir.
When they go back up, what he told me was, there was a practice of a lot of your volunteers, and I don't know, 'cause I didn't see them do it, and I don't know if he did, that they actually, when they washed down the walls and the floors, sometimes they would also wash the ceiling. Don't know why. But the ceiling tiles would let the water through, because they're porous, and the insulation would suck it up, and that's why they molded. So if you agree, if you agree for Wendell to do it, I can ask him to go ahead, get the insulation, get them reinstalled. But my, my caveat is, don't, don't wash the ceilings now with water.
But, but sir, excuse me. They're vinyl, but go ahead.
The, the tiles that were replaced for the ones that you were talking about, all those ceiling tiles have been replaced with vinyl tiles, which are not, which are not.
Okay.
Yeah, they're impervious surfaces.
All right.
Yeah, they're not counting anymore.
If that's, if that's, if that's the case, then must the humidifiers, as you say, are in there and they're working, then if they replace them and they don't get wet again, they shouldn't mold.
But, but there's still no insulation.
Yeah, we still have no insulation.
I know, if the board agrees for that to be done, then we can do it.
Okay, what's the board's pleasure on replacing the insulation? Okay, because, Ms. Forbes, correct me if I'm wrong, if the county's paying for it, I think it has to be a, in other words, a bid, right?
Wendell will get quotes, and now, if you recall, one of those three items that you agreed to before has not been completed yet, because Wendell's trying to get another quote. The first one he got was about twenty-five thousand dollars. We're gonna, they're all gonna probably be about the same thing. Technically, if it's under thirty thousand, my state law, didn't have to get it. But I'm trying to be upfront and do it properly to see if we can save you some money.
Okay.
Not sure if that's gonna happen, but as soon as that's done, now what I have to happen, because of, of the way the floors and the walls are treated, because they, they get like that because the dogs scratch it off, and then the state wants it, wants to replace. So in, in order to do that, the dogs are gonna have to be out of there, because I think they would be like gassed because of the way it's done.
Maybe, we do, I mean, we can work around it by moving dogs. Right now, I don't, we're, we're, okay. Right now, in the back, we could, we would have to move them. We don't have a place to move them right now, we've got too many. We have to move them out first, so I can get back to you on that.
Okay.
Yes, Mr. Sosselman, you are right. The dogs cannot be in there in the back. But see, you've got the adoption, then you've got intake and outtake, so we'll look at the best way to do that, you know? Did he give you a time element?
Uh, he should, I think he's got a walkthrough coming up in the next couple of days with the contractor that wants to come take a look at it before submitting a quote. And I'll have, I'll have him to contact you, so you can coordinate.
Yes, sir.
If I may, I, I think the, may, I'm just thinking out loud, and I'm just putting this out there. It may be in the best interest to do like one segment at a time, like the back building has two separate total segments. Maybe do one at a time, that way, 'cause if we have to have all the dogs out and no dogs can be in, that means all their services will be interrupted as far as intake as well. So if we could divvy it into three different sections, that might be the best, in the best interest of everybody to, to be able to keep providing services.
Uh, we'll let Wendell know.
That, that's something y'all can discuss with Wendell when he's doing his walkthrough.
Right, and I'm, I'm just putting it out there, if no dogs can be in at, at all during that, then we couldn't take any dogs in, which we wouldn't be able to fulfill the contract as far as providing service.
And the last thing, Mr. Sosselman, I need to know, I've got a contract loofah coming out, things like that. Do I need to report to you on things that are happening that we're paying for financially? Like our roofs on the roof, they have to be recalled, be self-combed, and the shingles put down. Is this something I need to do a report to you on what we are doing to carry the building?
You could just, you could just send me an email, that'd be, I think that's fine. And the scheduled walkthrough is this Thursday at ten AM.
Yes, sir.
I just have one question.
Yes, sir.
When you, when y'all was talking about this, the state, it came back from the state, I think it was three items we agreed on that we was gonna pay for. Did y'all work out the other items, so it won't be a misunderstanding about what's left on that list?
Now, say, repeat.
The list, we, I think we agreed upon doing three items on that list, and the last one, I think there were two of them. The two of the items was already taken care of, it's just that big twenty-five thousand dollar ticket item that was left.
The last one is the big one, that's because it's.
But she said, they said a whole list, so.
No, sir, there's only three items.
Three, okay.
You've got the kennels that have to be taken care of, you've got rock that has to be in the back, which is six inches.
Right, we got that.
And what was that?
Plumbing.
No.
The plumbing's already done, the rust and paint on the door, metal doors.
But that's part of the quote he's talking about. The flooring and the painting is all part of that last quote. Yeah, the, the three items were the rock, the plumbing, and the door, or the painting, and so, yeah, they've been taken care of.
Okay.
The rest of it will take care of.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, my motion still stands.
All right, I have, still have the motion on the floor by Mr. Gatewood to approve the Animal Shelter Services Agreement. Is there any other discussion on this agreement? If none, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Thank you, motion passes to.
Thank you.
One thing I'd like to add, just for your information, no action required.
Okay.
A little while back, the board was talking about getting rid of some of the properties that the county owns that we no longer need. One of those buildings happens to be the old AMS building on McLaurin. I heard from Wendell this afternoon late that it goes live on gov.deals tomorrow.
Excellent, thank you, Mr. Sosselman.
Yes, sir, you're welcome.
All right, thank you for that update.
Is there a minimum bid that we've established?
Forty thousand.
Forty thousand, thank you.
Any other questions for the manager at this time?
I'm almost afraid to ask this question, but what is the status of the former Water Department building? When do we plan to put it on GovDeals?
Uh, we're still pumping gas down there, so we want to use the, the gas without, if we don't, we gotta pay somebody to pump it out, which to, to me is counterproductive, but as soon as we get that down to just a few gallons, then we'll do the same process.
All right, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
And one last thing too, 'cause I know you've asked me this before, the annual audit. We were shooting to get it done by October thirty-one. Not our fault, it's the LGC's. Isn't that a novel idea? And they have extended it for everybody in the state, counties, cities, and towns, villages, whatever, to December thirty-one again. So we're on track, and it's just them providing something that they require in the audit now to our auditors, which they have not done yet.
So we can have our portion done, but they won't give us correspondence back?
Correct.
Okay.
We've done everything in our power to do right now, with the exception of that one last item that, that will be up, would actually be between the LGC, Local Government Commission, and the, and our auditors.
Okay. All right, as long as we've done everything we can do by then.
Yes, sir.
Okay, any other questions for our manager? All right, moving on, I, I don't have anything for Chairman's report tonight, so we're gonna open up the floor for Commissioner Concerns or Comments. Mr. Larry.
Just a little bit, going back to what Mr. Short said, and going back to the last meeting, and just here in general. I've always followed commissioners better not comment on matters brought to the board during this time, but delay action or comment till staff's had an opportunity to research subject matter. That's why I don't speak after public comments. I don't think that is the time to get into back and forth, right then and there. We've been lax during our public sessions. As far as abiding by time, and the back and forth and things like that, I just think it's a time right there, and that's the reason I don't speak. But to speak on it now, and Commissioner Ellerby, I listened to what you said last meeting. I listened to what Mr. Short said last meeting, in my mind, and the way I've always come up. Quick to listen, slow to speak, slow to anger, you know? I had to take the information in that I've received. Once I received that information, I don't agree with it. You chose to do what you did, you know? I don't agree with it, but I'm not gonna sit here and call a censor or anything like that. I don't, I don't think that's censorship, but I do, I just wanted to be clear, I don't agree with it. But I will say this, if you had that one line in there, just like you said last meeting, I'm not here as representing Anson County as Commissioner, you know? So that's, that's where I said it. I didn't agree with it, I wouldn't have done it necessarily, I wouldn't have done it. But that one statement, like you said also, and I don't think that you, that would represent Anson County, you know?
Certainly.
So that's where I said, I just wanted to be clear in my, in my speaking, that I don't agree with it. But that's, there's a time and place for comments, and just like you said today, Mr. Short, Commissioner Concerns is where that point is, after the public session comments, so.
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Yes, sir.
First of all, I want to thank Mr. Short for his presentations at our last meeting, as well as tonight. And at the last meeting, I distinctly heard Mr. Short saying, well, get the transcript, it's available. And the very next day, I received the email from Mr. Short criticizing us for being quiet. I hadn't received the con, the, the transcript at that point in time, but I did get the transcript. And I would not have gone to a courthouse in Anson County, Moore County, Union County, Mecklenburg County, to support the person in question. It would have been very poor judgment on my part to have done that, and I would not have done it. I detest drugs. It spoils and ruins too many lives, especially here in Anson County. So thank you for giving me the grace to get the transcript and reading it for myself, and it confirmed there was a Waysboro Town Council member, there was the mayor of the town of Waysboro where I live, and there was a county commissioner. None of those individuals represented me, and I want you and the public to know that. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I gotta say something.
Yes, ma'am.
First of all, I wanna thank and commend Tara Udi, Olivia Tucker, and Sandy Smith. They have the, where you can get the, for the one hundred counties, you can get your birth certificate here. You don't have to go to another county to get it. And I think that's a real plus for the, uh, the people in the community, not having to go out of the town and get their birth certificate, and also they can get death certificates. So I just wanna say thank them for bringing that to our county. And speaking on what Mrs. Short said and Mr. Daniel said, I'm piggybacking off of what that, Commissioner Litt said. We have a certain, we can't speak during the time that y'all are up there speaking, they tell us not to speak. But like Mr. William Short said, we can speak during our commissioner. Mr. Short, I don't, I don't, I don't side with anybody that's doing, doing wrong. I'm, I got my own mind, I got my own beliefs, and if it's wrong, I don't believe it. So I just wanted you to know that. I'm not sitting silent because I believe in it, I'm, I just didn't say. So I just wanted you to know that, I'm not sitting silent because I believe in it, I'm, I just didn't say nothing at the time, 'cause we usually don't speak during whenever we have a comment. Thank you, thank you for coming and approaching the board.
Thank you.
One thing I wanna add to that, um, Chairman and the board and citizens, I took an oath in nineteen ninety-eight as a law enforcement officer, and uphold the law.
Alright, thank you for that. Any other Commissioner, Mister Ellerby?
Lastly, because, uh, some of the statements were geared toward me, I made clarity of that. Um, I have my own mind, such as these other commissioners, and as I stated before, I didn't go to represent Commissioner Gatewood, Commissioner Little Reed, Commissioner Cottle, Commissioner Mims, Commissioner Leary, nor Commissioner Woodburn. I am Joshua Ellerby. That's who I am, that's my name. I was Pastor Ellerby, after becoming Joshua Ellerby, and I later became Commissioner Ellerby. As I stated, my reasons for going were not as a commissioner, I stand on that. Uh, and in reference to an apology that was directed towards me, it was not any to disdain or disrespect to you, Mister, uh, well, it was not. Wow, uh, it, it was no disrespect to you, it was just interesting that, when I did make that apology, I have yet to hear anybody. I did it, I could, yes, sir, I did it, I did it in this chair, yes, sir.
Okay. M- m- Mister White, we just, we, we've already had our public comment session, so thank you.
Alright. Again, I, I address, I address the gentleman that spoke last week, and I address the public right here, that was the only reason I spoke. Um, uh, I, I gave that apology. I said, my apology was that I was not advised legally, didn't think I needed to. Uh, I didn't go to speak on whatever what was in question, I have no knowledge of it. I spoke on what I knew, and that was a person's character. I agreed that any wrongdoing, I was not there to support wrongdoing. And, uh, this is the last thing I'll say about it, I'm done with it, it's over with, whatever his plight is, uh, that's between him and the government of the United States of America. I apologize s- again, if that's, again, this is the second time, I'll say it again. I apologize to those that had the wrong perspect- perspective or perception of my decision. But it was not to represent Anson County, I went and represented Joshua Ellerby, because I know this gentleman personally and his family. I did not know of his, uh, allegations, I did not know. Uh, but I, for the representation that it, for those that say it was a bad look, I apologize the last meeting, and for those that didn't hear it, I apologize again, I have citizens that reach out to me as well, of all economical statuses and everything, and I had these conversations. Uh, so, there it is. I can't undo it, not trying to undo it, because my intentions and my purposes for going, um, I know people right now who have had character witnesses. And they're seeking office. And I'll leave it at that.
Alright, any other, uh, Commissioner Concerns or comments tonight?
Yes, sir, I have one.
Yes, sir.
Uh, Mister Chairman, uh, in our last meeting, we had an excellent presentation from Department of Transportation about some work they wanna do on, uh, Highway seventy-four, uh, somewhere between where State Employees Credit Union is located, down to the former Wade Manufacturing Company. And they mentioned that it's gonna cost eighty-eight point five million dollars to do this work. And, right away was eighteen point five million, utilities, four point nine million, construction, sixty-five point one million dollars. I've received several calls, in fact, as recently as yesterday, I was at IGA and a citizen hit me up. And she said, Mister Gatewood, I've got a complaint, who is my commissioner? I said, well, where do you live? And she told me about where she lived, and I figured it could have been Mister Mims, it could have been Mister Woodburn, but it was probably me. So I said, I'm your commissioner, let's assume that. And she wanted to say, number one, what the hell are you gonna do on Highway seventy-four for eighty-eight point five million dollars? Now, hell, I use it as a quote, so please don't take it the wrong way. You know, it's interesting, she said, I, y'all have to do something about that. I said, well, it's not our money, it's Department of Transportation. But I did go back into my file, and I pulled out a flyer from February twenty-nineteen. At that time, the total cost of this project was going to be sixteen point eight million dollars, sixteen point eight million dollars. The right-of-way, five point five million, construction, eleven point three million. And I told her, I said, I really don't know what they're planning to do, but it seemed like a awful expensive project, especially given that there's a bypass being planned around the town of Waysboro. I really think we need to, uh, invite Department of Transportation or someone to come back and explain, uh, what their plans are. Not only for Highway seventy-four improvements, but also for the bypass. Because from a timing standpoint, these two projects are gonna collide right between one another. So why not take that eighty-some billion dollars and apply it to speeding up the bypass? That would certainly be my encouragement to Department of Transportation. So that's my concern.
Alright, we will, uh, make note of it, and I will make contact with the DOT representative and see if we can get them back for a better explanation on, to what their plans are.
And I would ask the clerk to please send each commissioner a copy of this.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, Mister Chairman.
Thank you for that. Any other Commissioner Concerns?
I'm not really concerned, just a comment, eh, it jogged my memory. I just would ask that these grant things be put in the minutes for public, so the public can see it, and, you know, I love all the handouts like we talked about before.
Okay. Uh, Miss Adams, uh, if you can facilitate that? Thank you. Alright, any other business to conduct tonight? I'm not sure if we need to go into closed session to finish discussion of a, uh, attorney contract? Is that something we wanna handle tonight, or are we prepared for that tonight, or?
I guess we can just follow up on the last piece.
Okay.
The dog, and it could be quick.
Okay, yeah, I think it'll be very quick, so, I'll entertain a motion to enter into closed session for.
So moved.
The second.
Motion by Commissioner Mims, second by Commissioner Little Reed, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion to come out of closed session.
Second.
Did we vote on that?
We're fixing to.
Oh, good.
Alright, Mister Leary.
Motion to come out of closed session.
Second.
We have a motion to come out of closed session, uh, by Mister Leary, second by Commissioner Mims, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Thank you, we are now back in.
Say.
Alright, we have a motion to adjourn the, uh, public session by Mister Gatewood, second by Commissioner Little Reed, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Meeting adjourned.